Okay.
All right, welcome everybody to our October 12th School Committee meeting. This is remote. It is recorded. So for those who are guests on our meeting tonight, joining us, we thank you. You will have the opportunity if there's questions to raise your hand, we'll allow you to unmute, turn your camera on, be part of that. For now, you can enjoy listening to us and watching us. But we will make sure that you have the opportunity to raise your hand, so raise your hand feature. And we'll make sure we acknowledge you and we'll also have a comment period at the end as well. So with that, we started with our agenda. So in lieu of the Pudge Allegiance, because it's a challenge tonight, it's an all of us standing up. We do that every meeting and that's important, but I am going to take a moment just to say that I know we have some of our community members that are affected by what's going on in the Middle East and in Israel right now. And it affects our families here and their families there. So I just want to let everyone know that if there's anything involving their families that we can be of help with, we want to be supportive of those things. And you know, we thoughts and prayers to that all those involved down in Israel, Middle East as a whole, it's a challenge right now. We want to be supportive of our families that are impacted by that. So if anything is, just reach out to the schools and we'll do our best to help. So with that, we're going to get into our agenda. So we have some minutes to approve. So we have mission, our regular session minutes, September 19th. As submitted, I would take a motion to approve our September 19th regular session minutes to be approved as in released as submitted. Motion? I have a second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by eye, raise your hand. Thank you.
And I will be abstaining due to absence from that meeting.
Right. I think for the purpose of any few further votes, just because we're on remote, it would be easier if we just, we'll just roll call the rest of our meeting. So I'll just go through and each of you can just say aye in your last name. That would be thankful, appreciated. Make things a little clearer. Okay, so we have, let's see, October 12th, do we, we don't have any executive session minutes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So that's going to take us right into our committee meeting, committee reports. We have King Philip and Ms. Sharp.
Okay, we had our last meeting on September 25th. We had gone over the superintendent and had finalized the goals and we had approved the superintendent's goals. And in the superintendent's report, he had talked about coming to Plainville with yourself, Justin, and also with Ms. Parsons. And I believe also with Steve, with the Commissioner of Education and talked a little bit about that visit. And also that was on September 22nd. And we also got the news that the Thanksgiving game for King Philip versus Franklin will take place this year on Tuesday, November 21st. And it is at 7:30 and it will be at Fenway Park. So it is $20 per person for, and it's good for both games. There's another game that's scheduled, I think it's Boston Tech that's right before that. And so that's quite a different than years past. So I'm really excited about having that opportunity. And we also did have a presentation from the Assistant Superintendent on the curriculum and the professional development and their plan for the year and what they've been doing on their PD days.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So budget subcommittee, I'm sorry, did I get my mic? I got my page just messed up there. I apologize. Get back to the right page, negotiations. Ms. Molly Plant.
Uh, nothing to report.
All right, communication subcommittee, super nice, Ms. Molly Plant.
Yep. So just one thing. So I did get the computer here and I did set up an Instagram, but I think to maintain the Instagram account for the school committee that we want to start up, we'll need, I think it'd be best if we can create a, I don't know if this is possible. So Stephanie, like a joint school committee email to then be sort of the administrator of that Instagram page. And so anyone, then I can just transition from school committee to school committee, no matter who's on it. So maybe we can talk about that next time we're in person.
Yeah, sure. Sounds good.
Okay.
Anything else there?
Uh, that's all I had.
Thank you. Sickly Bank.
Uh, nothing to report.
Wellness, Ms. Sharp. Are you muted?
Oh. There we go. All right. Sorry about that. Uh, we had our wellness committee meeting last week and the committee had Doc Pearl, David Murphy, Christine Jassit, Christine Seferson, Megan Nickerson, Tracy Delgrasso and Lisa Luth. And we had talked about the grants that they were applying for, and we also talked about the policy that you all passed and I was able to bring that information that the wellness policy had passed and they were very grateful for that. And now that they have the policy in place, we can start the planning of the different events this year. One of them being another event in place of our typical walk to school event. And so once we have our next meeting, I'll have a little bit more to report on that.
Thank you. Budget Subcommittee, Mr. Albert.
Sorry about that. Can you all hear me?
We can.
Nothing to report on the budget front. Keeping in touch with Mrs. Parsons on some of the things we'll be discussing later that do have an impact on our budget. And I appreciate the communication and we're on top of it, but I have nothing to report from the budget subcommittee.
Thank you. Policy Subcommittee. We're gonna, do you want to table that one until November?
Yes, let's table that because we've been waiting till we get at the other policies before we move on to more policies.
Sounds good. We did have a memo under resignation, transfers, appointments and retirements. Anything on that, Mrs. Parsons?
No, I think it's pretty self-explanatory unless the committee has any questions.
Any questions? Something, nothing heard. Superintendent's report, back to you.
All right.
Oh. Oh.
All right. Well, thank you for handing over the mic. I assume everyone can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just get this little thing out of here. Okay. To the bottom, actually. Okay. So as Michelle said, the commissioner and one of his colleagues, Anne Marie Stronach, visited Plainville on September 22nd. And you'll see here a welcome sign that our students and Mrs. Duran put together for us. And we were able to display that right on the wall, right, kind of right in front of his face as he sat in the conference room and listened to some of our experiences with welcoming our new students. And we had also in attendance Brian Noble, our town administrator, Jeff Johnson, Chair of our Select Board, and our entire administrative team, and as Michelle also referenced, some of members of the King Philip Administrative Team. And the purpose of that meeting, and I think I shared this with the committee prior to the visit, was really to share some of our experiences with the commissioner. Most specifically, and we'll talk about this a little bit later when we talk about staffing needs, in terms of our ability to effectively welcome new students, given the size of our town and some of the capacity challenges that we have as a district. And you know, Steve or Justin, if there's anything else you wanted to add about that meeting, please feel free, but I think we found the commissioner to be very empathetic and very understanding and quite supportive of where we are in Plainville right now.
Now, Steve, do you have any comments on that?
Oh, I thought that the meeting was very, very informative. I think he came at the whole issue from a place of understanding. And I think he left the meeting with a more clear picture of what we're going through in Plainville. And of course, it's, it's kind of a microcosm for the other communities that are impacted by this. I thought it was very worthwhile. I was glad I was able to be there. And hopefully we'll be able to keep an open line of communication with him now that we've established that relationship. I think that will pay dividends in the long, in the long run as we all navigate this unknown territory here.
Yeah, I agree. I think he understands the situation we're in and that we're doing the best we can and, and the staff is doing an amazing job and he saw that in action. And we're thankful for that. And, but I also understand that some of this is out of his control as well. So it's, he presented well, he seemed like he wanted to be a good communicator and a good partner and we'll keep endeavoring to keep that, like you said, Steve, keep the lines of communication open and work through it the best we can.
Right.
Great. Thank you.
I will add, in addition to that, that superintendents meet monthly by what they call roundtables. And those are groups of superintendents who meet with other colleagues in our similar geographic area. So our roundtable is held earlier this week and new students and families living in shelters was a significant topic of conversation at this past week's superintendent's roundtable. And we were visited by Secretary Tutweiler, the Massachusetts Education Secretary. And again, he was very eager to kind of capture our, some of, you know, our, our growth and some of the celebrations with our new families and certainly our challenges as well. Likewise, today, the commissioner hosted a Zoom meeting for all of, I believe it's 61 districts right now who have new families residing in their school districts. And Desi put forth a number of offerings for us that we hadn't previously had access to. So for example, we're now going to have access to free of charge translation and interpretation services. And we're going to have access to some other sorts of support that Desi is putting into place for us. So they, they truly are trying to listen to the needs. So for example, one of the other supports that they're going to put out for us is kind of some emergency trainings for teachers who haven't taken the, the ELL class that we're all asked to take. Not everyone has had that opportunity yet. And if you kind of missed the first wave, which was quite a while ago, there can tend to be a substantial fee associated with those courses. And so they're looking to put resources like that into place for districts. So I think more will be coming as they're really listening to us and trying to very quickly allocate resources to us. All right. Open this. Okay. All right. So I wanted to just highlight a little bit. A thank you to Justin. Justin was the first person who actually shared with me the article that was in the Boston Globe last week. And the Boston Globe is highlighting literacy and the challenges in terms of our students acquiring appropriate reading and writing skills. And as we know, and I've talked about before with this group, this is not just a Plainville challenge, it's a nationwide challenge. And our selection of wit and wisdom really is where we think we're going to get a lot of traction in terms of shifting our curriculum and making some really great strides with our young readers and writers. So this you have before you is an example of something that came out of a fourth grade classroom that I was able to visit. I don't know, last week or maybe the week before. And in the fourth grade, the current curricular unit is called a great heart. And the students were writing an essay that had to do with some things that they had learned and read about regarding the heart. And this is the kind of template that our students are working on that it's called writing a painted essay. And this is a fairly common structure that a lot of schools and curricula use in terms of actually color coding pieces of writing to help students really make sense of, how do I make a piece of writing make sense, refer back to the topic and really capture that reader with, with good language and good evidence, especially when they're referring back to text. So this was something that was front and center on the board in the classroom. And likewise, that's also going on in grade four is some of our students are delving into text features. And what, what these classes did was they created a simulation for students where they actually were looking for text features through kind of a medical viewpoint. So the class was transformed into kind of a medical lab. And the students had certain materials and tools that were laid out for them as they went through various examples of text and started to really pull out in detail the text features that comprise different, different pieces of text that they're studying. So here you can see, I mean, it gets quite involved in this classroom with students actually dressed as medical professionals and digging in and kind of adding all of those text features to what, what's on those papers on the table is actually a sketch of a human body. And they're kind of filling in the body with these various text features. And what I think is kind of important to state here is that what the research is now telling us is that knowledge is very, very critical in terms of students building their ability as readers. And so all of this background knowledge and the vocabulary that our students are interacting with, I see it on the boards in our classrooms. I see the students using it. Our principals obviously do as well. And this is just a great example of, you know, really helping students bring this knowledge to life. So I wanted to share just a couple of updates in mathematics. As you know, we've talked about our acquisition of ST Math, which all of our students are working on. And ST Math, while it engages in multiple, multiple layers of math standards and, and kind of areas for students to learn. It's all based on a puzzle kind of a format. And so students are challenged to create, to accomplish and solve a certain number of puzzles, each of which is related to a specific math standard. And one of the really great things, especially with a number of new students joining us who are just beginning to learn the English language, is that ST Math relies on visuals and not text. So a lot of times we see that students will suffer in mathematics as a result of a reading problem, not as a result of a math problem. And we're finding that a number of our new students especially are really, really taking to ST Math very nicely. And this is going to give our teachers a really nice way of measuring our students' ability in mathematics that's not reliant on their English skills. We've also just heard that we've been awarded a grant from Desi. It's called the High Quality Instructional Materials Grant. And this year, that grant is valued at $87,400. And we have allocated that money to work with a consultant firm called Teaching Lab. Teaching Lab came to our attention because we were partnered with them through Desi last year when we received this grant for the first time. So we were just kind of getting to know Teaching Lab last spring when the grant was awarded. And we really felt that their attention to detail and their true understanding of how to move students forward in the area of mathematics was incredibly high quality and incredibly valuable for our students and our teachers. So we are going to be using the majority of that funding to bring them onsite several times this year. They're going to be providing onsite coaching and feedback for our teachers and our administrative team. Their first visit with us was on October 6th and they'll be returning three times over the course of the year. What I just wanted to highlight a little bit about Teaching Lab and their philosophy, they talk about head, heart and habits. And these are all areas that, you know, we haven't necessarily done as much work in as, as we can in terms of our work of involving all of our students and making our schools areas where all students belong and can succeed. So some of their philosophy, we're not going to be teaching separate lessons and saying, oh, this is your equity lesson today and here's a math lesson. They're trying to help us understand how all students need to have access. That whole idea of social capital, which is highlighted in the heart section. You know, how do we get to know our students? How do we know what's important to them? And how do we leverage that to help our students achieve success in the classroom? So that's just a little bit about who they are as an organization. We intended to have Thermo Fisher come and kind of do a number of things at once in one meeting, but due to some of the shifts in our meeting, it didn't quite work out that way. But so now the, the good news is that we get to celebrate Thermo Fisher and their generosity twice, both tonight and when we return in person at the beginning of November, we will have some representatives from Thermo Fisher and some of our students as well together to talk a little bit more about this. So as I think many of you know, because we've talked about this multiple times, Andy Dalton, who is actually pictured on the far right of this photograph, really spearheaded originally through work with Ann Dargan and Robin Roberts Pratt. He really spearheaded this amazing mentoring program that spanned the school year at the Wood School. And at the very end of the year, at kind of their celebratory pizza party or whatever it was at the end of the year, he came up to me and said, okay, what's next? What can we do next? And we, we love that we've been able to work with your students. We want to continue doing that. But we think there might be some, you know, finances that we might be able to provide to the school in order to help you do even more. So that really coincided very, very nicely with the inception of the STEM position. And you'll see Caitlin Nunes, our STEM teacher on the far left in this photograph. And she partnered with Andy to come up with, okay, what, what do we really need? What would be helpful? And she has identified some kits called Engineering is Elementary, which they're instructional curricular kits that are put out by the Boston Museum of Science. And so these are pretty highly regarded materials in the educational world and we're very, very fortunate to have them. And Andy really didn't want us to wait much longer to receive the material. So we agreed that we would propose the, the acceptance of the donation this evening. And he would bring the cartons to our building so Caitlin could start to really dig in and, and bring some of this to life. But we look forward to having them coming early in November to talk both about the engineering curriculum and to have some students report out to you on their experiences with the mentoring last year. On, I believe it was September 25th or somewhere thereabouts, we invited Synergy to come and join us. Synergy and, and we were able to receive some support actually from our chairperson, Justin Alexander, who's worked with Synergy in the past, as well as other districts, kind of people with more history than I have in the district, because the district has also partnered with Synergy in the past. And they agreed to come to Plainville and they conducted an audit of our two facilities, which we'll be reviewing with our safety committee. And the safety committee is not just made up of Plainville personnel, Plainville school personnel. It's also inclusive of our police chief, our fire chief and, and others who lead the charge in town safety. So we'll be going through the audit that they prepared for us. They were on site for a couple of days in the summer. And the safety training that they offered us at the end of September, and you can see our trainer there and a number of our staff members, that really focused on, you know, what, what do we do in the event of an emergency? We went through a number of kind of tabletop scenarios. It, it was not the kind of training where, you know, we, we had loud noises and people really feeling that for first kind of frontline level of anxiety. And the response that we received from our faculty has been very favorable. People thought it was very informative, very helpful. And you know, after a number of years now where we weren't really able to get into some of these kind of close up training, I mean, a couple of years ago, we certainly all wouldn't have been sitting in an auditorium the way people are pictured in, in this photograph. So you know, we, we feel better prepared at this point to kind of address anything that comes our way, hopefully something that will never come our way. We talked about this really being the insurance policy that we hope to never have to access. I wanted to touch on just a couple of facility updates for people. It may be a little bit challenging to see this in the photographs here, but this is the, the field at the Wood School. And the facilities department has done a really nice job of getting that lot seeded. They've cordoned off a portion of the lot that was primarily really very much just dirt and soil infused rather than grass infused. And we've got sprinklers out there now that the water ban has been relaxed a little bit. And the next plan is that we are working with Jenna Merritt, our facilities director, to install a well in that area. So we will not have to worry in the future about maintaining the grass for our students in times of drought or water bans or things like that. But that is definitely coming right along. And right now, half of the field is fenced off, but the other half is still accessible to our students. The other really kind of exciting thing that we have going on in the Wood School playground is the introduction of a Gaga pit. And this kind of came to be through Sarah, our Assistant Business Administrator, who's been working fairly closely with Jim Merritt. We were talking about a Gaga pit and Jim had never heard of a Gaga pit, but immediately his interest was sparked. And the next thing we knew it was I can build a Gaga pit for you. So Jim and his team have been working for the past several weeks to put this little pit together for us. It's got some safety coating on the top in green and a set of rules. The bottom of the, the pit is kind of that rubberized mat to hopefully prevent any injuries when, when enough students fall down. But this is, I don't know, Michelle, you look like you're smiling. So I assume you have some experience with Gaga. Hopefully our, our students will really enjoy that. I think it's just about ready for its entree.
Nice. Jen, I just one complete digression for a moment. I don't know if there's somebody, you or Stephanie, maybe you can just reach out to somebody to let, open the door for the PTO.
Oh.
Tonight, custodian wise.
Oh, open the, physically the door?
Yeah, for the Wood School. Yeah. They are locked out. Sorry for the interruption there, but.
I'm going actually ask Christine if she can text Tim Forrest over at Wood.
We are, we are good at multitasking in this group.
All right. The other exciting news is this is the back of Jackson, which has not been accessible to anybody since at some point at the end of the summer when the old playground was disassembled. And this was work that was going on just today. We're getting that whole area. And by the way, the, those doing the work right now pictured here are actually Plainville town employees, people from the, the DPW. Between Jim and Sarah, they were able to manage to have some of the, the leveling of the area done by our own town employees, which obviously saved us a little bit of money and absolutely demonstrated this kind of continued partnership between the schools and the towns. So they were filling this area in with pebbles today. And I believe as early as Monday, we will start to see the playground arriving and being put together. So the playground will be installed first, followed by the turf flooring. And then we will be working on a plan to get some better paving in that whole area. So we'll have a really nice playground and smooth pavement and just hopefully a really beautiful place for our students. Really thanks to the residents of Plainville and their voted town meeting.
That's great.
Yeah. And I, I think that's it for tonight.
Thank you. Just a couple of points. I know I just want to thank Thermo Fisher, you know, I know we're going to acknowledge them again in a minute, but great partnership. We, it's a win all around for the town and our students are benefiting from that now. And that's great. So I'm glad you highlighted that tonight. We'll definitely recognize them in November at our in-person meeting. So thank you for that. And then you kind of touched on a little bit, the, the article I shared with you. We're going to kind of highlight that as well. That's, that involves some of our curriculum materials and where we are at as a district and compared to even our peers. And I think it's worth noting the strides we're trying to take with our students and helping our faculty help them as well. So in November, we'll have that as part of our meeting to talk about that. So worth highlighting.
Great.
All right. Any questions for the superintendent? No, thank you. It's great.
Thanks.
Okay, so Ms. Clark could not join us tonight. So if there's, if there's any questions about the two budget items, we'll go pass those tonight and table those. We'll receive an update in our next meeting. Mrs. Parsons, we go on to staffing needs.
Yes. So you, you do have a sheet in your packets. I'm just opening mine up. And Oh, there we go. So you know, and Kristen and Anne who are on this call, you know, please feel free. It's a little more awkward on Zoom too. I can't just look across the room and say chime in, but please do chime in. So originally, I think people are aware that we welcomed a cohort of 16 students who joined us during the month of September. And I would say that those students are, you know, integrating quite well and successfully into our classrooms. Our teachers have done really an incredible job opening their classroom communities to our new students. We have a number of teachers who have made it their business to begin to learn the languages that their students are speaking. We have different resources that have been provided to us, both by our ELL team, by our technology team. Our principals have been extraordinary and it's, it's really been, and, and not, and not just that, but you know, I really should commend Suzanne Roberts, our Jackson School secretary. She's been going to the hotel and really kind of overseeing registrations and, and that sort of thing. But what we're finding, and it, it would have been the case even with the original 16 students, but now that we're finding that we have another 11 students who will be joining us, we're at the point where we really needed to make some very deliberate decisions about what sort of staffing would really provide us the utmost support for these students. And you know, frankly, to kind of keep the wheels in motion. So you know, when you're working on translating and preparing different materials and trying to help the student, you know, even, even Robin was giving me an example today about a, one of our students who lost a pink mechanical lost a pink mechanical pencil. And it was a, a very kind of challenging conversation that she was relaying. Her trying to figure out what a student really need. The student was in distress. It was an important object and belonging for that child. And she was relaying, you know, well, that took me a little while to figure out what the child really needed. And that was a principal who was in the classroom, an extra individual, which is above and beyond, you know, what we might normally see in a classroom. So now imagine you're the teacher. And, um, you know, that's just one teeny tiny, um, snapshot of something that can go on during a day. So we know that we need to help build our students' skills. We know that we already had a cohort of students who are learning the English language. And, um, with the new students who've, um, who will be joining us, a couple have registered today and we've got a few more who have not yet registered, but will be. Um, our ELL department has really, um, expanded by 100%. And we had an ELL caseload of around 30 students and now we're somewhere in the area of 60 students. And those really are the students who are receiving direct services. That's, that doesn't really even incorporate the students who are what we call former lingua, former, English language learners. So that's another whole kind of cohort of students that our English language team, uh, is responsible for. So, you know, in addition to things like the English language instruction, we know we need classroom support, things like I was telling you earlier, when we talk about mathematics and teachers are trying to tease out what, what do my students really know? Uh, where, where do I need to kind of help them and what's the starting place? All of those kind of in, inquisitions take time and energy and uh, we need assistance in order to be able to assess our students and get them their just right supports. So our administrative team met on Tuesday morning and we started to brainstorm, um, you know, if we, if we have this funding, which we do from the state, what sorts of positions really do make sense in terms of us being able to optimize our staff and really to be able to optimize the potential for our new students and all of our students. So, um, what you'll see at the bottom of this proposed staffing needs, you'll see, um, an explanation of what we anticipate coming into the district from the state for our new students. And so this was based on what you have in front of you. It was based on an estimate of 27 students, which is where I believe we will be, give or take. Um, once we get all of our anticipated students registered, who we know are living in Plainville right now. And when you take that number of students and you calculate a hundred and $4 per student per day, which is what Desi has committed to. And you assume that we have about 150 days left over the course of the school year. And we add in the, um, grant that Desi has also promised, which is $1,000 per student. That gets us somewhere in the neighborhood of $400,000 that we will be able to allocate without touching our operating budget for personnel, supplies. Um, if somebody needs a winter coat, if somebody needs a Chromebook, which we've already made an investment in some technology, um, you name it. This, this is really what, what these funds are for. So what we've come up with to this point, um, are a few things. So we have a couple of things that I'll be honest, I don't think I came to the school committee for approval on, which um, maybe I should have, and in hindsight, we won't be doing that again, but I think the committee probably appreciates that we had to do a couple of things pretty quickly. Um, so the first thing that we had to really deal with was, was the bus. And so we have put a bus monitor on the school bus each day. And that has been working out, um, very, very well. Uh, it's given us safety in the morning, safety in the afternoon. The students do need to cross, um, the entrance to a neighborhood on their way in and out of the hotel. And we do need that adult there to support. And the bus driver, um, also expressed need for, you know, if you've got um, more than a dozen students who are brand new to school, who've, and Kristen will attest to this, a number of our students are kindergarten level. So they really have never done school before. And we've, we've got, you know, some language barriers as well. Um, the bus drivers were looking for a little bit of support. So we've, um, worked through that. We have a morning and an afternoon bus monitor. And we've expanded that just a little bit. The bus monitor, now we started with two, but now we've got one person who will be doing the morning and the afternoon. And that person actually serves as an ELL paraprofessional already in our district. She came to us last year and returned this year. So she is now, um, we've extended her a little bit in the afternoon. So after the students get off the bus, she's going to be present for things like homework help, extra tutoring and, um, doing things with families such as if families need to register or we need to convey a message from school to home. And she's, um, a, a multilingual person as well. So she's able to communicate with families very readily. Um, she's fluent in Portuguese, which means she can get by in Spanish and she, um, has been doing okay with Haitian Creole, um, as well. So she's been doing a really nice job with that. Um, one of the challenges that, just to kind of give an example, um, you know, we always stress as school leaders, when those buses leave here, you're always hoping that there's someone at home to greet the, the children. And if there's not, if there's an emergency or something, those children are bussed back to the school. And then we call the family and say, you know, hello, your child is here. Please come pick up your child. And there has definitely been a learning curve of what to happen when you arrive back at a shelter kind of a situation and you have over a dozen students and there might be a parent who's not there. And, um, there have been a lot of kind of, kind of learning curves in terms of our new parents' expectations and understanding about what their role is at, at the end of the day and our policies in terms of safety. And, you know, we're not just going to let a child go with anybody. It's and so there, there are a lot of pieces. So that position has been very valuable to this point. The other position that we, um, put in, into place right away after the commissioner was here was an additional paraprofessional because we were able to locate a woman who speaks fluent, um, Haitian Creole. And she actually is from Haiti. And she understands the language and she understands the culture. And we felt at that point in time, that was a very important position to capture. We knew we would have the funding. And, uh, Haitian Creole was the language of all, all that are spoken among our new families. That was kind of stumping all of us. You can't readily go to your phone and have speak into your phone like you can the Spanish and Portuguese and have the phone spit out um, language in Haitian Creole. It, it just is not available. So, um, she has joined us in a role that we structured, I think we called it something like family student, um, support liaison. So we've asked her to provide, um, in-school support and she has a full schedule of working with students. And we've also committed to tapping into her if we have translation needs and family needs that require someone who's fluent in Haitian Creole. And she's been a wonderful, wonderful, um, resource. Right away, even in her interview, um, we, we could just really feel her o- obvious depth of understanding of a culture that she, um, has lived in and we have not. So she's, she's been hugely helpful. Um, on top of that, and the things that we're looking for at this point in time, we're looking to add an ELL teacher. Um, we, we just simply can't take the one teacher that we have and manipulate her to successfully work with almost 60 children. That's just not, um, a possibility. So we do need to add there. Uh, we're looking for two English language paraprofessionals. Um, that would come to a total of about $36,000, $18,000 each. And, um, we've had bits and pieces of support where we might bring in a substitute for the day. Um, different people who offer to volunteer or come in and help out. And we just see the difference when students have a regular individual, um, who a- actually is proficient in the language as well. So in all of these positions, we are going to be advertising them as, you know, multilingual candidates preferred. It just, it's, it's not necessary that, that they have that. Uh, but if they do, it's an incredible added bonus for us and for our students. The other position that we are looking for to add at this point in time is something that we're calling a family engagement coordinator or director. And what we're finding is that we have, um, not surprising to anybody, we have a lot of very well-meaning people. Uh, we all want to do the right thing. We all want to support students. And because of that, we have a lot of really important tasks that are distributed in ways that aren't always sustainable. So I've taken a little bit of, of something. Kristen has a little bit of something, Robin and our ELL teachers and we're going really from having one ELL teacher and a para to really almost a team or a department. And that's happening overnight. And, you know, even little things like we realized, um, like I gave you the example of a student and not knowing who to call at the end of the day when a parent wasn't there. Because we don't, when the parents originally registered, a lot of them didn't have emergency contacts. And now a lot of them have an emergency contact who might be another family living in the hotel. But we don't have that in our paperwork and we don't know who lives in room 255 and who lives in room 220 and things like that. So we need someone who can kind of spearhead the work, um, and, and help us create or adapt systems that other districts have already used or those that we want to put together for Plainville. Um, and help us follow through in terms of the, the right supports and making sure that every last detail is addressed. Our families have lots of different things that we're hearing. So we might hear something about a laundry situation or a transportation situation, or, you know, how do we get a mom to the school when we really need to have a meeting, but there's no vehicle? And so w- we've kind of distributed on kind of an emergency slash temporary basis, a lot of these tasks, but we'd like to systematize them. So we all know, okay, when this happens, this goes into place. When this happens, this goes into place. And uh, we believe a director will be able to, or a director or coordinator will, will help us to streamline our efforts. So we're more efficient for our entire operation and, um, most importantly, for students who are before us each day. Um, so with that, that's kind of the one cluster. Uh, there, there are two different types of staffing that I wanted to talk about tonight, but that was obviously the the, the most significant that we're looking at right now, that I'm, I'm looking for the committee's thoughts on and hopefully support with.
Thank you. So I know it was, um, shared out. Obviously we can now have a point for questions here, um, from members. Um, I would like to point out that I think the analysis of the funds that are coming in, um, versus what we can expend has been, you know, they've done their due diligence with that to make sure that we're trying to stay within what we anticipate from the state. Um, I would also like to acknowledge, um, you know, our town hall partners who met with us regarding um, the situation and their support regardless of state funding, saying we gotta do what we gotta do and we're here to support you and be there. So thank you to those people who, um, you know, Brian Noble, uh, Jeff Johnson were at that meeting in particular, and, uh, we know that they have our back as we work through the situation. So we're thankful for that as well. So we know we're covered around what we have to do right now with these things. So, um, my goal here tonight is to obviously, you know, have your, hear your feedback, members, and also, um, uh, it's a little gray because this is kind of an unusual situation. We've never really been given funds in this format before. Um, so regardless of where it lands, um, from a, uh, responsibility standpoint, I'm, i- i- nothing else. I'd like to at least try to have a vote of support for what, um, Superintendent Parsons is proposing. So I'd open up to any comments and questions from any members.
Uh, yeah, Jen, thank you for putting this together. Um, like we're all saying, this is kind of unprecedented, uh, and we're having to adapt and assess the needs on a continuing basis. I think the information that you put together looks fantastic and, and I think we have to be aware that it might be subject to change, um, as the situation progresses and we figure out more about what these students need to thrive. But I think this is a fantastic start. I can't imagine how difficult it's been trying to coordinate and make sure that we're taking care of these new students, just like any other students. Um, so I really appreciate what you've done. I just had one question and maybe you said it and I just might've missed it. On the bottom of that chart, the part that's highlighted in green.
Mm-hmm.
I just wasn't sure because above it, it says anticipated funding of 421,000. And then below it, 448,000. I was just unsure what like what, what's the reason for the difference in those two figures?
Yes. Um, so I took the 27 students based on a hundred and $4 a day and calculated that out for 150 remaining school days. And then on top of that funding, Desi is committing to a thousand dollars per student. So I took a thousand dollars for 27 students and added that to the original.
Um, okay.
That's, that's where that came from.
Okay. Okay. It was right in front of me and I just, I just missed it. Um, and so my only other question is like, do you feel, and I know it's, this is all brand new and evolving, but do you think this is what we need now? Or do you feel like there's more, but we just don't have the funding to cover it more that would be needed?
So I think, you know, you said it first, Jen, you talked about this being unprecedented and I don't think any of us who have done anything in around with public education have ever found ourselves in a position where there is money sitting there and you aren't kind of gulping every single time you go to, to make a purchase or advertise a position. And this is, um, i- it's just highly unusual. And especially there's just such a diversity within the state. You know, if you're a Lawrence or, you know, they had Salem on, on a call I was on this afternoon, or you're a Framingham. They're working with, with this every single day. They have systems, they have processes, they have staff, they have infrastructure. And we here in Plainville, we just simply do not have that. And so we are literally building that while our students are here. So, you know, what I've calculated out so far is an expenditure that would, um, constitute about half of what we are able to access. And I think that it's only October. So I think that we really need to assess, you know, what, we have another whole group of students that we haven't even met yet, but we know they're coming in. So I think that we are looking at this as the beginning. We really want to see, uh, we want to be a little bit cautious. You know, we know our hotels are booked through December 31st. But there is not a person I've spoken to so far who have said that, that they think this, um, anything's going to change on December 31st. So I think, you know, we, in Kristen and Anne, you can certainly, um, or Stephanie, you can feel free to add anything you'd like. So I think this is step one. Um, the other real incredible challenge right now is just the abs- absolute, um, uh, un- unavailability of, of people for us to hire. There aren't a lot of people out there. So, you know, I, I think it's going to be a work in progress, but I wouldn't tell you tonight that I think we're done.
Okay.
I think, you know, I, you know, I was using this earlier in a phone conversation, um, that we're building the airplane as we go. We don't, we didn't have it. And I think we're, the staff, you're, everybody is doing an amazing job of building an amazing um, product for these new students, but um, different passengers get on and off at different airports and they have different needs. And I think this will be a very fluid thing that comes back to us regularly. And I don't think that that's, means anything's wrong. I think that we're, um, that's means we're doing our due diligence. So Jen, I think it's a great point. Both gents, it's great points and, and to hold on to some of those funds for the unknown, I think is, is smart.
For sure, for sure. I totally agree. Yeah. And Jen, I just want to commend you. I don't think we've been giving you enough credit, um, and the entire staff. I mean, it's, it's really, like you said, there was an unexpected wave of students who certainly need our support and our help and I, what a fantastic place for these students to land in because I think Plainville is a small district with a very, very big heart. So I just want to extend my thanks to you and the entire staff for being able to think on your feet and get these students the care and support that they need. So thank you. Thank you for putting this all together.
Thank you, Jen. And that, that truly is the, our administrative team, our teachers, our support staff. It is, it has absolutely been a joint effort. And, and, and you yourself, Jen, were one of the first people to step up and say, what can I do? And all of a sudden there was a clothing drive. So this, the, the town really has been amazing.
Michelle?
Uh, yes, I just had a quick question and, and forgive me, I may have not followed it correctly. So I see everything here. I understand everything that's being budgeted. I know the additional amount. Um, Ms. Parsons, you had mentioned prior, something about, and I, again, I could have this incorrect. Um, some positions that were already posted or filled prior that I think are not on this list or are on this list. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
No, that's a good question, Michelle. Everything is on this list. So, um, you'll see on the list, Haitian Creole Student Family Liaison, that person is already here with us. Uh, the bus monitor is already here with us. Everything else on this list is not.
All right. Thank you. Cause I, I had a feeling you mentioned it and I, I knew I was mixed messing it up. And I would echo a little bit of what others had said. You know, this is unprecedented and it is building the plane as we go, but, um, as educators, we've been here before. And I'll just say that bad word, COVID, because we were building the plane and flying all over the place, trying to figure out, and every day was a new thing. So, um, I give the, the, uh, teachers and the staff and the administration a lot of props. They were able to handle that like champions. And I have no doubt that you'll be able to do the same in this situation too.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Renice?
Yep. I just want to echo the same. So fantastic job in handling it. A nice job on the recommendation and putting that together, uh, what you need at this point. Um, and yeah, as things come up, we just And yeah, as things come up, we just will assess then. And I think it makes a lot of sense too to, to keep money on the table look at things as everything does evolve. So nice work. Thank you.
Mr. Robert.
Well, more of the same. Praise for everyone who's had a role in this, this very challenging situation. From the top all the way down to the, the students who I understand are being very welcoming and of their classmates and new friends that they're meeting as they go along. I think in, in a case like this, everything is very fluid. It changes day to day. The numbers are up, the numbers are not quite what we thought, or there are more, or there are more people coming. And so we have to have a very, very open door to address all of these situations. And the communication has been excellent. I felt as a school committee member that I've been informed all through this entire process. Way by the superintendent and her staff. And let's, let's just remember that, you know, this is what community is all about. But we have to keep a, a very open door. As I said, the, the visit from the commissioner was a huge step forward, in my opinion. That's something that very rarely do, does Plainville get that kind of attention. And I give credit for all the folks that put that together. But the, the communications has to remain very open and constant as you're doing. That's very important. We stay in close touch with the state, that we stay in close touch with our local legislators for assistance and help and, and just raw information. So that we're not caught unaware of what have been any of this. We don't want to miss a day. Because as you said, we've only got a hundred and fifty days left. We're already into the middle of the school year and it's a huge challenge for the teaching staff, for the paraprofessionals, for parents in general to understand what's happening and to have a grip on the whole situation. And I think that the money, what you've done with this document that you sent us tonight, showing where the money is going, where it's coming from, that's excellent. There has to be a very strong emphasis on following that money and making sure that we know what the state has said they're going to supply, what the town is able to, to do for us. And thus far, it's been an excellent team effort.
Thanks, Steve.
Mr. Sharp, can you hand up?
Yes, Ms. Parsons, I was just thinking, considering that so many districts are finding themselves in this position and needing these similar or sane positions. Has there been any talk from the commissioner on people that are in current college positions, university positions, going through school? Fast-tracking some of these individuals or letting them do, as you know, you used to be teaching things like that, letting them do real world in place of some of their courses to try to get more individuals out in the field to support the schools.
Hmm, that's a really great question. I don't think I've actually heard that question asked quite that way. I've heard people talking about things like emergency licenses and things like that. But you know, I am in close contact with them, with his office and Anne Marie, who's in touch with us. And I can absolutely ask where they are with that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
All right. If there's nothing else on that one and the committee members feel acceptable, I would entertain a motion to of support to affirm the positions that Superintendent Parsons has presented us tonight, so she can go forward.
Jen, so moved.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote in no particular order based on where I see you on my screen. Ms. Maloney Plant.
Maloney Plant, aye.
Mr. Renice.
Renice, aye.
Mrs. Sharp.
Sharp, aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well for the chair. And motion carries. Thank you. And now, so I know we, if those who have the document, there's a separate section and that was done intentionally. I was working with Superintendent Parsons on this because it doesn't involve the state funds. So I think you're going to present that now.
Yes. So the second piece of this is asking for the committee's approval to increase our band teacher by a point two FTE. So our band educator, Mr. Thurston, joined us last spring, very late in the game due to the unexpected resignation of last year's initial band teacher. And the work that he's done is just, you know, it, it's been tremendous. And I know Robin, you're on here now and feel free to, to chime in. So I was able to have a chance to speak with Mr. Thurston and with Principal Robyn Roberts Pratt and talk a little bit about what's happening with bands this year and where we are in terms of student enrollment. And get a, a grasp on where we might have some shortcomings. So really, right now, the only shortcoming that I can detect in the band program is that we don't have enough of band program. And we took a very, very conservative approach with reinstating bands in the Plainville schools. And I, I don't think there's anyone on the committee who doesn't understand why we took such a conservative approach. We have a great number of needs. We originally found some unexpected funding. And we had a lot of different ideas, very important things that we needed for that funding. And you know, I think that we kind of looked at last year as kind of a test, let's test this back out and see how it goes. And Sam Thurston has proven himself to be really nothing short of extraordinary. And so what basically was summarized in our meeting with him was that we, at this point, what our worry is, is that we have so many students and he's been very careful. He didn't overdo it. And Robin and I were very clear with him, we're going to limit band to grade five and grade six. And we ended up having some scheduling holes because of just the way that the, I mean, Robin's a scheduling guru. But there's only so much you can do when kids have to go to lunch and they need to go to recess and they have, there are just places they need to be. And we weren't able to kind of get every, you know, square peg in a round hole. So instead of Sam having blank spots in his schedule, he opened band up to fourth graders. And so we had a number of fourth graders that we didn't necessarily anticipate. But we also have some fifth and sixth graders who either haven't been able to get themselves into a group because of some of the scheduling challenges. Because he's only here two days a week. And the other challenges in some of the groups where he's been incredibly accommodating, he's got up to thirteen kids in a group. So for example, his flute players, we have thirteen students trying to learn how to play the flute all at once. And what his worry is, and I, I really, I, I looked at his data and listened to his description and he's a seasoned band educator. His worry is that we're going to have kids who are excited to join the band and are going to experience undue frustration. Because he's just not able to get to all of them. We, we would never have an academic, small instructional group with thirteen students. We wouldn't even have a small instructional group for the most part with half of thirteen students. But we're, we're asking him to do the same. So our request is he provided Robin and me with a number of scenarios. And we, we talked with Gail and we looked at our finances and we recognized enough savings in some of our hires this spring out of our operating budget or this fall, that we feel that we can cover an additional day. Which would allow him to add quite a few groups and reduce the, the number of students in each group. Robin, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that you articulated it quite well. He is a phenomenal teacher. His charisma and enthusiasm is just outstanding. And I know that with additional time, he'll be able to better suit the students and separate the very large groups and give them the attention that they need and deserve to really excel in band. It will also afford him times where he can put some more advanced players together, separating them from some beginning players. And I just think that this is going to continue to grow and we're going to see a need for more band in the future. Because kids so enjoy going to see him. And the squeaks are now turning into sounds, which will turn into melodies, which will turn into a wonderful concert. And I'm really looking forward to it.
Question, I think if I heard the numbers correctly prior that the interest in the program now, numbers wise by students, is at the same, if not larger than what it was before the program was cut?
Yes, I think if I remember correctly, the interest in band now is where it was when the band member, instructor was full time. So I think if, if that's correct, Jen, I think that's what he had mentioned.
I do have those numbers in front of me, Robin. And what he shared with us was that in the nineteen twenties school year, we had a hundred and eighteen students in band with a one point O teacher. And right now we have a hundred and five who are already accommodated with a point two teacher, excuse me, a point four teacher. And we're looking at a hundred and thirty five who want to be involved. So there has to be somewhere in the middle between one point O and the point four that we currently have. So we really can meet the needs of the students who are, are so very interested in this.
Any questions or comments from members?
My main question would be, is this enough? Because as it's been stated, this, this hire has been probably one of the most impressive hires that I've seen in my, in my day at least. The man is just doing wonders. I have a fourth grader who's now making noises on the clarinet that I just can't get over that she's able to put already, you know, almost a melody together. And it, it sounds like something other than, you know, the, the beginning. So this teacher is really something special and I want to make sure that we have enough for him to do the job that he wants to do, because I know he has a very high standard.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the, I don't know that I have a great answer to that. So the, the easy answer is no, it's not enough. That's, that's the very easy answer. The more complicated answer is, we really are trying to be about as fiscally conservative as we can. And I frankly, I think it's fairly unusual for the district to come back and ask for more once a school year has started. And I want to make it really clear to the committee that this isn't something that, you know, we are going to start making a habit of. But this is, it's just kind of an unusual situation where we did have some, a little bit of savings. And we, we really do have some students who haven't been able to participate in something that we're, we're now offering. But I think as we start to think about our priorities for next year, Steve, you know, we're really going to have to think about where does this, where's this going to fit in and what, what do we project for next year? I don't think last year, just because the way things turned out until April, I don't think we had a great look into the potential for this. And I think we have a much better sense of what this program can kind of be resurrected into.
I completely agree. I think if pieces fell into place a little bit sooner, we would have been better able to project the outcome of what was going to happen this year.
Mrs. Sharp, can you hand up?
Yes, I would just kind of echo on what Steve had said. You currently, if I have it correct, you have it at a point four and you're looking to go to a point six?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not going to put you on the spot because I'm sure you may not, or maybe you have, have the figures. If we were to go to a one point O, what would be the, the cost? I know it's ten thousand to go from four to six.
Yeah, so essentially we're looking at, he's about, or the position where it is right now is about twelve thousand dollars per day of the week. So two days a week for the whole year, we're at about twenty five grand. So you add another day, it would have been twelve, but we're already now looking at a November kind of start. So you know, it would be another thirty, thirty four thousand dollars or something like that.
And I know that this is slated this point too, to come out of the operating budget. But I also saw the role is being that the migrant class, the group size issues due to the, you know, overwhelming interest overall. So I wondered if we didn't have that extra funding to go to a one point O, would we then be looking at taking some of that money from the state that had given it to us? Because it is to give the migrant children that opportunity also. I know it may be a little gray there, but I'm just asking, you know. And, and it, it's personal for me because of the fact that I was a member on the school committee when we had to make these drastic cuts and nothing was fun about that at all. And I know how passionate and how upset and the fact that everything I've heard about this new teacher that you've not new, but came in at the end of last year, has been really good. And I know that when we had to even cut down a little bit, there was no way we were going to hang on to Mr. Sherwin because we couldn't pay him, you know, so I worry about that, you know. So I'm just kind of echoing a little bit of what Steve said, but I don't know if it's something that is, we can look at for this year and not even looking to go into next year.
I, I had a conversation with Jen about this. And my concern is he's such a talent that we don't want to lose him and that we need to make sure we do something about it. So I mean, obviously I like to hear from all the members, but I, 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 it, it makes me very happy to hear these comments. And if there is an appetite to look at maybe trying to get him up to one point O, I think we need to take a closer look at what we're doing as a group. And, and maybe something can be done, but I think it's, it's a decision we all need to make. So I'd like to hear more from Jen and Chris.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to, I mean, everyone is kind of saying the same thing. But if you talk to Mr. Thurston for thirty seconds, you can see how passionate he is about this. I know, Steve, you mentioned how your daughter is in it. My Danny just started and he has never picked up a trumpet before and now is busting into his sister's room at bedtime, showing her all the, the different sounds he's learned to make in just a couple of weeks. And I, just what everyone else is saying, he is so impressive, so impressive. And just a very quick conversation. And the numbers speak for themselves. I mean, we have record number of kids that are interested and excited about this program. When we were at the music box picking up the instruments a couple of weeks ago, all the Plainville kids, they were just so, so excited to begin. So I am fully on board with bringing him to adding another day for him. I think it's necessary because we need to, we want to get as many kids into this program as are interested in it. And I really think it's just going to continue to grow. I hope it does, because what a gift we can give our, our kiddos. So I, yeah, I am fully on board here and I would like to kind of keep it in the forefront of our minds. So as we're going through the budget process for next year, if we can start looking at that, knowing that the interest is so huge.
Thank you, Mr. Renice.
Yep, so I'd like to, to say the same. So I mean, I think definitely go with the point two, stays within the operating budget. I think we should take a closer look at bringing them to the one point O. We found the right person for the job. And retention's a big deal. And we're just talking about other positions that are difficult to fill and to bring people on board. So if we found this person who's really doing an excellent job in this role, I think it is, this is restoration too, right? This is bringing back a position that existed. We're still trying to build back. So if we can find the funding for that this year, I would say, let's do it. But we do have to consider next year as well, right? So it'll become part of the operating budget. So just in the right manner.
Is the general feeling amongst the members that, you know, we should target to try to retain, move to a one point O? I have some ideas I could work with Mrs. Parsons to bring back to you, but I want to, you know, vet those first. But I want to make sure that I'm going down a road that all of you generally are on board with.
I would be supportive of that. I think that's a good way to, to approach it.
I, I would just want to understand, you know, the cost, like what's the cost of doing that? But I'm, I am on board with, with going that direction, but I think it is important to look at, you know, where does that money coming from? And what's the cost of something else? We, it's a limited budget, so.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to, the idea of bringing something back, you know, I think maybe we could tackle the point six tonight. And then look at bringing the remaining point four back at a future meeting to discuss ideas.
Yep.
But I'd go through the exercise, everybody, if that wasn't their appetite.
Yeah, I'm definitely on board with that. I just want to make sure, and I don't know, maybe this was Michelle that said it. I'm not sure. Because everyone is saying the same thing. He is really such a, a treasure to have on staff, working with our kids. That I want to make sure if we say we can bring him back to a one point O, that it's something that we can sustain. Because I think there'd be a lot of mistrust there if we say, okay, we can bring you back to a one point O. And then a year or two down the line, we're not able to hold on to that.
Absolutely. Yeah, a lot of, I mean, a lot of conversations. And I think, you know, from, from a long-term standpoint, maybe short-term solutions. But from a long-term standpoint, we need to discuss that internally, our priorities. We should include our town hall partners because obviously this would be a position added. We want to make sure it's easier to have everybody on board than trying to shoehorn it in. So I think there's a lot of conversations to be had, but I think there's been broad, townwide, whether it's schools, town hall, the, the public support for this program to come back. And I think it's success. This is a product of a success. And I think that everybody understands that and, and it can be supportive of that. So. So that's, I have no problem working on that. And I think it's a great thing to do. So, but in the interest of that, if there's no other comments, I entertain a motion that we approve Superintendent Parsons to. change the position to eight point six based upon her presentation tonight, followed by a future discussion about further.
Jen second.
And Miss Maloney Plant is a second. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, Miss Maloney Plant.
Maloney Plant, I.
Mr. Brenice?
Brenice, I.
This is Sharp.
Sharp, I.
Mr. Albert?
Albert, I.
And Mr. Alexander is an I as well, and that motion carries. Uh, go forth and grow band.
Yes.
So, and we will continue to keep this topic on the front burner because it's not like great for the kids, but this is something true, the the community is behind and they really, this is important to this community and and I want to make sure we are responsive to that. So, um, great, all right.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Anything else on that one? We're good? Okay, so we're gonna move on to gifts and donations. Bear with me as we have to do a few different things here. So I'm going to just pull up the motions because that'll be a little easier. All right, so I'm gonna, so we've already heard about Thermal Fisher, so if there's no, and please verbally speak because I'm actually looking at a different screen. So if there's no opposition to what has been presented, I'm going to read a suggested motion for Thermal Fisher. All right, so I would entertain a motion to accept Thermal Fisher's gift of STEM-related instructional supplies for the value of four thousand three hundred and ten dollars of fifty five cents and school supplies for the value of five hundred dollars.
Brenice, so moved.
I have a second, any further discussion? All right, and we'll go through it again. This is Maloney Plant.
Maloney Plant, I.
Mr. Brenice?
Brenice, I.
Mrs. Sharp?
Sharp, I.
Mr. Albert?
Albert, I.
And Mr. Alexander is an I, the motion carries. And thank you again to Thermal Fisher and we look forward to hearing from you in person in November. All right, switch back my screens. Okay, so we're going to go on to some PTO fundraiser. They have been in there, requested, is anybody speaking on those tonight?
Uh, one, just one backtrack for a moment. Thermal Fisher actually had two items in there. Uh, they might have gotten kind of mushed together, but there is, they actually also ran a school supply fundraiser for us. That should be in the back.
Yeah, I was looking at the recommended actions. Let me see here.
Yeah, so we approved the four thousand three hundred and ten, so we just have to approve the school supplies of five hundred.
Oh, I read that in the motion.
Yes.
That was all in one motion, yeah.
Clearly, I wasn't listening carefully. Thank you.
Well, I, it's been a long day. Maybe I did, I read it that way, or not, or somebody confirm that, please.
You may have said supplies. I don't know if the the number, the dollar amount was.
That's okay. I I thought I did, but you know what? The beauty of it is, it doesn't hurt to do it twice. So, because we didn't, we just covered, there's no problem. So I would entertain a motion that we also accept Thermal Fisher's school supplies with a value of five hundred dollars.
Michelle, so moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Excellent, I have a second and we'll run through. One more time, oh. One second. There we go. And Miss Maloney Plant?
Maloney Plant, I.
Mr. Brenice?
Brenice, I.
This is Sharp.
Sharp, I.
Mr. Albert?
Albert, I.
And Mr. Alexander is an I and we are potentially doubly covered, but nothing wrong with that. So motion carries and we are going to move on to switch back. All right, so we have PTO fundraisers. Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, so the, so there are two separate fundraisers. I don't know if the committee would like to vote individually on each or combine them together, but I'll explain them at once. So the first one is um, an event called Photography in the Park where they have contracted with a local photographer to offer student photos, family photos, what have you, during the end of this month and early into November, which would give the photographer time to pull the photos together in order for families who so chose to use them for holiday gifts, cards, et cetera. And twenty percent of the proceeds from that event would go to the Plainville PTO. So that would be done entirely off of school property and um, not, it doesn't conflict with anything during the school day. The second fundraiser has a specific date already in mind, which is November thirtieth. And that would run from five to eight PM. And that, I believe they want to use the Wood School for that. And that would be kind of a combination of a number of activities that children and families could attend that would be free of charge. And in addition to free activities, and I believe they would have some kind of a special holiday themed guest that photo opportunities could be taken with. They also are looking to have some vendors and these vendors would be things like local small businesses. We have a number of students in the district who have their own little businesses and they would like to maybe sell their wares at this sort of event. And this would take the place of what I believe used to be a holiday store where students were able to come and buy some gift items during the school day. So they've moved it outside of school hours, added some fun family events. If you don't choose to buy anything, you can come and enjoy those. And it it gives some of our young entrepreneurs a chance to have have a moment in the spotlight as well. The PTO would, that that is considered a fundraiser because they would be charging a a a fee for each vendor. So they would essentially pay a small fee to have their spot at the school for that event.
Thank you. This, I think, is a uh, adaptation of what we used to do with the Holiday Boutique that fell out of, due to COVID and not being able to go to school. And the Holiday Boutique was just a well-loved part of our Plainville educational tradition. It, in addition to being a nice way for the kids to get something for their families and the special people in their lives around the holidays, it also I think it added a little bit of an educational model in that you know, they they were being taught how to use their money correctly and how to, you know, keep track of their purchases and so forth. So if that's the direction, uh, I guess the, my, my own feeling would be that's a great way to do it and to let the kids be vendors is is all the better. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of that, if I understand it correctly.
You do.
Good.
Any other questions, comments?
Uh, I just have one question and and kind of what Steve just talked about where it used to be during the school day. Some of the items, I just worry about kids who wouldn't have the ability to go and if, you know, for whatever reason. And then also students were able to get gifts for their family that were very low cost. So I'm just wondering about the, you know, just that the opportunity and access is still there for all the students.
I could, or Robin and Kristen, you know, collectively, we could bring some of those questions back to the PTO. My guess is they thought about some of those things, but I just don't have that level of detail here tonight, but I do understand the things that you're asking about.
And I've, I've never known and you know, Mr. Sharp, I know you, you've been involved for a long time with it too. I've never known the PTO to not take care of somebody in a, in a situation. Um, I'm sure that they, they've thought that through. And and I know the staff knows the students who are in those situations to help identify, so. But I do agree, yeah, we can definitely double check on that.
Yeah, I definitely, I would echo that, Justin, I'm sure that they did. I just wanted to put that out there because that just came to my mind, you know, for that. And, um, you know, what would we do without the hammer that came home one year and the toe clippers that came home? I mean, what can you do?
Still have the screwdriver in my toolbox. I used it the other day.
Don't have that hammer.
Any other comments, thoughts on it?
I think this all sounds great. I love the idea of the portraits in the park. And I would be the first one to sign up and hope my kiddos will smile for the photographer because they don't for me. So the Christmas cards that we send every year are very interesting, but yeah, I mean, a huge thanks to the PTO. When I went to the Jackson School about a hundred years ago, I remember shopping at the Holiday Boutique. So that we can continue that tradition and, you know, it's changing with the times, but I, I think that's wonderful. So yeah, this all sounds wonderful to me.
Right.
Very good. Mr. Brenice, you're all set?
Yep, well, I'm good. I think it sounds good. I, I think it would be good to just understand what was considered for folks that may not be able to make, to make it there at that time and and to keep, uh, have some kind of accessibility to low-cost, low-cost gifts.
I'm sure I'll be hearing from some of the PTO members. Probably, they're meeting right now, actually, I believe, so I'm, I'm sure. So if there's no opposition to approving these requests, we can do it as one. Uh, that generally okay with everyone?
Yep.
So then I would entertain a motion to approve the PTO fundraiser request as presented.
Jen, so moved.
A motion and we'll call Mr. Albert in a second. All right, and then we will take a roll. Any other discussion? All right, so the screen's moved a little bit, so we must have had somebody leave. So if I change the names up, sorry. Try to get it right. So Miss Maloney Plant?
Maloney Plant, I.
All right, Mr. Brenice?
Brenice, I.
Mrs. Sharp?
Sharp, I.
Mr. Albert?
Albert, I.
And Mr. Alexander is an I, motion carries. I think I got the order the same. So we're done there. Legislative update, this is Parsons.
Sure. So I think earlier today, or maybe last night, the committee received a draft of a letter that I put together and ran it by the chair before presenting it to the committee. And it really is in line with some of the conversations that we've been having with the commissioner. And it came to mind after an email chain had gone back and forth about some support for our new students and Marcus Vaughn happened to be on that email chain, Senator Roush happened to be on that chain. Um, I think some of the governor's aides were on there as well. And the point that I'm trying to, it's kind of a, a balancing act and a tight rope that we're walking right now because in no way is this thinking to say anything at all that's not supportive of our new students because we are and they, they are enriching our school district. Um, and they're stretching us and it's, it's a it, it's just a very interesting experience and we're growing and we're learning from our students as mu- and our families as much as they are from us. I think the challenge for Plainville is, I heard somebody, maybe even in this meeting today or in an earlier meeting, I was in, talk about the term capacity. And right now, I, I do feel like Plainville is getting to the point where our capacity really has been stretched. And, you know, you can certainly add new positions and I think we're incredibly grateful for the new positions that we're going to be able to bring in. And for the state actually, and DSE specifically, really stepping up and supporting us. And Michelle, I think you made a really great point earlier when you talked about your, your thoughts for band in kind of a creative way. And I think this is the first time that we're potentially going to be able to experience that economy of scale where when you're larger and you have more, you have more resources. And it's very possible we may have some students who are new to us who want to join band that may end up helping us to increase our band educators full-time equivalent because we have students who he'll be able to support, but they're not the only students. Just like our power professionals that we're hiring, we're calling them ELL power professionals, they're going to be able to help all students because that's the way we operate. Uh, my, but my real question that I'm grappling with is when we get to a certain point where it's just going to become a little too complicated for us to continue to add to our roster. So, you know, as I said in the, the draft of the letter, when you have your ELL department that's been increased by a hundred percent, and when you see your entire student body increased by five percent overnight, when you hear the number twenty four kids, twenty seven kids, those numbers are not startling, but when you start you know, adding to that and amplifying it and saying, well, if you were a four thousand student school district, well, that would look like a hundred and seventy kids. Joined your district overnight. I think people stop when they hear the number a hundred and seventy. And so proportionally, I think Plainville is in a place where I feel as a superintendent, it's important that our voices are heard in terms of just our sheer capacity for space, for bandwidth and for ensuring that we're giving everybody what, what they really need. So my question really was, there's, there are multiple ways that uh, we can continue on our path and one is that I continue to advocate in the ways that I am and working with my DSE colleagues and my Mass Association Superintendent colleagues and things like that. But is there any interest on the part of the school committee to do a little bit of advocacy with some of our, our legislative leaders and representatives? So that's kind of was the impetus for this. Um, not in any way to talk about changing or asking, you know, students to depart, that, that's not at all the intent. The intent really is how do we preserve where we are and ensure that we're giving everybody what they need with the resources that have been allocated to us?
So, you know, the reason I wanted to bring it to you all tonight was for, you know, be open and transparent and have everybody have an open discussion about it. And if the will is there, then to support Mrs. Parsons with this letter. So I'll open it up to discussion.
Yes, so I just, I thought it was well crafted and I, I think it's fair to, to state where, where we stand today. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. You should advocate for the school and and communicate our current position. And if we need to do something differently, then, then we will, but I think it's fair to make the statement.
I would, I would agree with that and I think the word that you used Jen was for all students. So no, we are opening the doors. We are a community, as someone I think was Jen that said that has a heart, that is going to help. But there's also got to be a certain, not, I don't want to say a limit, but a point where we can't keep going because we're not meeting all the needs of all our students. So, um, yeah, so I definitely think that putting that forth and it was well crafted and putting forth that our concerns is, is important because otherwise you might still get more and more children added and then what? Because we want to be able to support all the children in Plainville.
I, I think another, the important piece is, is lead time, right? It's, it's how quickly. Just like Justin had said, building the air, the aircraft at the same time that you're trying to fly it. If you have lead time to, to build that into the plan, that's one thing. To have, you know, constant influx and not be able to catch up, that everyone, it will be detrimental to all the students, to incoming students and students. So I think that's an important piece. Get up, get up to speed to where we are and then, and then, you know.
And also for those new students, they deserve to have the education that we would want to provide, that we provide for our other children, but if we can't have the funding or have the people to hire, then we're not able to meet those needs. So it's just, it's an all-around, you know, piece. So no, I think advocacy is definitely important.
Yeah, and I'll echo what everyone's saying. I thought Jen, that letter that you drafted has all the information to be very transparent and very forthcoming with we are doing everything we can to support these children, but if we were to get another twenty seven uh, children in our schools, like Michelle said, we we might not be able to give them the services that they need. Um, and I was very encouraged to see those emails with Marcus Vaughn and the governor's office and the town leaders. And I think being able to communicate, send that, that letter and to communicate exactly what it says in those weekly phone calls, I think is invaluable because from the top down, everyone needs to be on the same page. And I think that's exactly what that letter is doing and I would I would be very supportive if, uh, not every week, I know that would be a lot, but you know, maybe once a month, providing an update in just the form of the, the format that you, that you did with that first letter. I think that would be I think that'd be really beneficial.
Yes, I, I agree with, I'd echo what Jen and Michelle said. Um, I thought it was really eye-opening, part of the letter and I, I can't see it right now, but pointing out in what Jen had said earlier, pointing out that the, the English language learners have doubled overnight. Overnight, gone from thirty to sixty. Yeah, it's, it's startling, but I think it's information that we have to, you know, you have to say it and say it until it's heard. So I'm all for increasing that communication and I know you're working on a day-to-day basis with the the state representative and the state senator trying to impact some of the governor's thinking, her staff's thinking on this issue. I think that's crucial. So I'm, I'm supportive of that and wouldn't mind seeing more of it.
Um, I, would everybody be comfortable with a, a motion of support for Mrs. Parsons to carry on with that letter? We all?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so I entertain a motion that we support Mrs. Parsons in the letter that she has drafted and to submit it as she has presented to us, to our legislative delegation, the governor's office and anybody else she sees appropriate for that letter to be sent to.
Jen, so moved.
Motion from Mrs. Maloney Plant?
Brenice, second.
And Mr. Bryce is a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, just one quick thing, Justin, should we be signing that with her?
Well, you know, that's a good point, you know. Mrs. Parsons, I actually would talk about that on the phone. Well, you know, that's a good point, you know, Mr. Parsons and I actually would talk about that on the phone, um, it could be. I, I mean, I'm, I'm completely fine with that, if everybody else would like to do that as well, we can countersign that.
Yeah, I think that makes sort of more, other if you have the signatures of the whole school.
Yeah, no, I got this, this, thank you, that's why we, we have these discussions, so I'm perfectly fine with that, so, you know, I commend the, uh, we want to, uh, Jen, I, this might play that you made the official motion, you wanted to amend that to include our signatures.
I, yeah, absolutely, um, I'm not sure the language I would have to use, but.
Our signatures.
Yeah, I'll just amend my motion to include all the signatures of the school committee, along with Ms. Parsons.
Mr. Nice, you good with that?
Yep.
All right, so the motion's been amended to include our signatures, uh, any further discussion? All is a favor, we'll go through Mrs. Maloney Plan.
Maloney plant eye.
Mr. Nice.
Nice eye.
Mrs. Sharp.
Shop by.
Mr. Albert.
Albert eye.
And Mr. Alexander is an eye, thank you and thank you, Miss Sharp, for your comment, that was a good catch, cause it was a discussion point that I had forgotten about as well.
Thank you.
All right, um.
I, I will, um, I don't know if this is too rushed, I will be in the schools tomorrow, um, so I can always swing by the office to sign, if, if that's enough time.
It, it will be, I'll work with Christine and we'll get it, we'll get it ready for the morning. Basically ready to go now.
Um, I do not have any items not anticipated at the time of posting, is anybody else? All right, so we have a public comment period, if anybody would like to make a public comment, you can raise your hand. Okay, we have one public comment. Um, Stephanie, would you mind, um, bringing her on and let her unmute and turn on her camera? And we have, I believe it was Molly.
It's not letting me turn on my video.
Stand by one second. Any changes, Stephanie? Do you want to promote her as a co-host for now, we're at the end of the meeting, then she could turn on her camera?
I don't need to do the camera if you don't care.
No, we want to give you the opportunity, so we'll try one more thing. Welcome to our meeting, um, we're, we're pretty, we're pretty flexible, generally, um, you know, we don't start a timer on, technically it's three minutes for the maximum fifteen, but um, we'd love to hear from you.
Um, do I need to give my address? Molly Roke, one oh nine Messenger Street. Um, last year I was a member of the How to Raise an Anti-Racist book group. As a person actively involved in anti-racism activities and promotions, I learned a lot and enjoyed sharing my learning process. However, last spring, we were informed of the termination of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Director. This came as a disappointment as I had seen an improvement in the school system in regards to addressing diversity and cultural competency. With the lack of a DEI director, our students can be stalled in pursuing a more inclusive educational experience. I'm speaking here to encourage the school committee to reinstate a sustainable DEI position within the district to ensure all of our students feel welcome, especially with the new students arriving. I do want to mention, however, that I am really pleased by what I heard tonight. Um, being proposed as far as positions and what's being done for these students. However, I do think having someone to lead this mo- movement would be incredibly helpful to these kids.
Absolutely, we appreciate your comments and, and we strive to do all that we can and, and we appreciate the positive feedback as well. So thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comment?
I, I might just want to add one, um, clarification. Um, do you mind if I add a clarification? I, Molly talked about the termination of the DEI director and I just wanted to clarify that last year, that was a grant-funded position. And so it was in no way that what the other kind of use of the word termination, it wasn't that scenario at all, it is true that we no longer have that position, but it had to do with the, the grant funding. Um, which doesn't detract from the need for the work and Molly's other comments, but I did want to clarify that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just add a clarification to, just, I, I, I thought the same thing, um, that I wanted to say. This came up at the King Philip, um, meeting, last, uh, meeting. And it was because it was a one-year grant and it wasn't, uh, renewed, um, from the state. But the conversation started there and looking at the programs that were put in place and, and the need. And so that's being explored, I know, in the King Philip, which of course, a lot of times King Philip works hand-in-hand with the three other, you know, districts, the elementary. So I know that that conversation is being had.
Thank you all, any other, any members have any other comments on this or any other topic for the good of the school committee? All right, well, hearing none. I'm, I'm gonna pull out my calendar, we were, we, we, we're gonna try to have our meeting. So our meeting is scheduled for November second, correct, the first Thursday? And the goal here is to be at Town Hall November second at six PM for an in-person meeting. Is that, so at this point, is that good for all members? I remember the regular meeting, so make sure we're all, we're starting there at this point now, while we're on the screen together.
Sounds good to me.
Yep, fine with me.
Then, uh, that is all I have for tonight. So, uh, with that, I wish everyone a wonderful evening, be safe and we'll see you at the November second meeting, thank you for joining us. Good night, everybody, thank you for your work on this. You need a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I'm sorry, good, thank you.
No executive, right?
We don't have an executive, do we?
We do not.
Okay.
So adjourn, no executive, all right.
So I know, I just click, I would have left you all. I got a motion, do I have a second? Uh, I, we'll call, uh, Jen as the second, so, uh, uh, Miss Maloney Plant.
Maloney plant eye.
Mr. Nice.
Nice eye.
Mrs. Sharp.
Shop by.
Mr. Albert.
Albert eye.
And Mr. Alexander is eye, and now I can officially say goodnight to you all, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Who's left? Everybody left?
I'm still here, I'm just trying to figure out how to shut it off.
Sure you work, it, it went very well, much appreciated.
Oh, good, I'm really glad.
Yep, no, it wa- it went great and we weren't, we weren't, and it was no influx or anything, we did good, so thank you very much.
So, yeah, I just, well, I just want to let you know that there was an option to actually to start the video, cause I had shut everybody off.
Uh, that's fine, we adapted, that's what we do, I, it, it worked beautifully, it was fine, so.
All right.
Thanks again, have a great night.